For all this meeting to order, everyone stands for the flag. Certification of meeting. Pursuant to the requirements of the open public meeting that Chapter 231 PL 1975, notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday, July 7, 2022 edition of the Bellevue Times. Chairwoman Alvarado.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Gold.
Here.
Mr. Graziano.
Here.
Ms. Wammen is not present. Mayor Malnew.
Present.
Ms. Nedelford.
Here.
Mr. Veniero.
Here.
Mr. Zangary.
Here.
Mr. Vine.
Here.
Mr. Di Lorenzo.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Marinello.
Here.
Chairman's comments. Just want to ask our recording secretary if you would check on the status of everybody being certified on this board, but anyone that is not notified. Okay, yeah. The approval minutes. There are none. No bill list, resolutions to be memorialized, nothing, no business. On the application for the board, TB 2204, 4553 Washington Avenue.
That's ready, Madam Chairperson. Madam Chair, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the planning board, thank you for coming out this evening for a special hearing on a summer night. We appreciate it. I would also like to thank your professional staff for the cooperation that they have extended to my office and to my team. And that is the township engineer, Tom Hurwitz. Frank Di Lorenzo has taken 50,001 calls for me. I appreciate it. A planner has been on conference calls with us, and we appreciate that. Thank you. We're here this evening to do third project for the Ethos group. The first one that we did was on Franklin Avenue, right on the Nutley border. And that was 56 units. And we're here to report that that project went very well. All rented, one year later, and not one child is in that. And that's one of the representations that I made to the board, that if, in fact, we had studios and one bedrooms, it was our estimate that no children would be generated. We understand the cost of children against the budget of this township. And all of our projects are either studios or one bedrooms. The one that we did next to the Shoprite, same one that was in front of this board, we're in the process of constructing that. And now the third one that we're doing closer to Mill Street, same configuration. I do have a host of witnesses this evening. I will not give an opening statement as to what their testimony will be. That would be repetitious, and I want to move this along. The first witness, Madam Chair, that I would like to call will be Nick Palmer. He's an attorney. He's not here to go under oath, but he is the attorney representing the seller of the project, and he would like to address the board. May I have that courtesy?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
Thank you. Madam Chairwoman, Mayor, members of the board, my name is Nicholas Palmer.
He's not the else word, Tom.
No, he's not.
You swear.
Is the name and address?
Sure. Nicholas J. Palmer. My office is at 1425 Broad Street in Clifton. Even though my office is in Clifton, I'm not a carpet bagger on the whole Bellevue boy. St. Anthony's K through eight, still a family. I represent Darby LLC. That's an LLC. The owner is Richard Con. Richie, as the name is still on that building, for decades owned, ran a body shop, automotive repair, and he did excellent work on restorations of old cars. He actually did an old car for me. Richie, as we all do at some point, retired, and he is now looking to sell this property. And we all hear it's hyperbole many times, but this is the wing link for everybody. Richie owns this property with his wife. As we all know, this was an ex-a-car dealership. When it was a car dealership back in 30s, 40s, 50s, they'd put multiple tanks on the ground. When Richie bought it, sometime in his 70s, whenever he bought it, unfortunately, nobody cared about tanks. It's on the ground, out of sight, out of mind. There wasn't anything wrong on his part or even his attorney. That's just the way it was. We all know better now. Unfortunately, there has to be some environmental cleanup, ballpark rough estimates, maybe $200,000 or more. Richie doesn't have that money. Now, it's in his interest, obviously, to want it done because he's a conscientious person. It's in society's interest, and most importantly, it's in Bellevue's interest. He can't do it. So by selling this property now, this is the wing link. Yes, Richie will get some money that will aid in the retirement of a modest lifestyle of him and his wife. The environment will be cleaned up. Those tanks and any surrounding contaminated dirt will be removed. And the town will get this beautiful building instead of what has become an eyesore. Washington Avenue, I remember way back when I was young, you know, and it all used car lots, things of that nature. And one by one, all these eyesores are being replaced by new beautiful buildings. So, like I said, on behalf of Richie and his wife, I'm asking this board to take due consideration of what Mr. Di Biase is going to present and approve this project. Thank you.
You see how good he is as an attorney? What he left out was that he kicked me around in the negotiations and that my client is picking up the $200,000. It's not coming out of his client's pocket, but at any rate, everybody is happy. So, thank you. Madam Chair, may I call the chief operating officer of sound development at this time as my first witness? Michael Pacillo.
State your name and address.
Michael Pacillo, Three Pine Metal Lane, last in New Jersey.
Who's someone?
P-A-C-I-L-O.
Do you swear in front of this one? Look, in the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Mr. Pacillo, you firmly say that you're the chief operating officer, yes?
Yes.
And you've been in charge of this project since the beginning?
I have.
Matter of fact, this project has a very long history because we started it before COVID. Is that correct, sir?
This is true.
And we're asking the board to approve what would be your third project in Bellevue, correct?
This is correct.
The first project is on Franklin Avenue, and that's 56 units. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And you were here when we made representations to this board that we believed there would be no schoolchildren coming out of that project?
That is correct.
And you addressed that?
So, our original concept for Ethos was building that was kind of an option for our children. My kids grew up in the Nutley-Valve area. I was born in Bellevue, worked at Bellevue School System. Kids were born and went to Holy Family. You know, we're local people. When we moved out, my kids were looking for places to live. And they ended up going to Hoboken in Jersey City. And there wasn't an option. I thought, why not Bellevue? Bellevue's a great town. It's got proximity. It's got everything that our kids want. So I developed that with my kids in mind. Where would they live? They can live close to their grandmother in Bellevue. They can live close to their aunts and their uncles in Bellevue. So we designed the building that would be appropriate for young people, but in that design period, we realized that it was also great for empty nesters. So our concept was one bedrooms, studios, small, efficient. Our motto is live simply, live beautiful. It's for the up and coming young professional or the person who's already retired. With that model, we knew would generate no children. We rented 56 units, and our demographic is exactly what we thought it would be. We have all single professionals. We have our kids that are living in Jersey City and Hoboken and Carney and Harrison moving back to Bellevue. My own daughter, so like, Dad, I want to live there. My girlfriends want to live there. So our cousins want to live there. So our kids are coming back to town. And that demographic, along with the empty nester, are taking the apartments, and you know, our demographic is exactly what we typed it to be. I think in our building, we probably have, out of 56, we probably have five couples.
And you found that by designing the rooftop deck for this targeted audience works? Why don't you go into that?
Our rooftop deck is beautiful. We have a beautiful rooftop deck with community garden. Sounds crazy, but we grow tomatoes, we grow peppers, we have basil plants, we have barbecue grills. If you go on the roof, you're cooking, you can pick a tomato right from the plant and use it in your dinner. We have peppers growing on the roof. So the building all kind of invests in that garden. They all, you know, they've all taken part in it. We have outside fire pit, we have kitchen tables. It really enhanced the community of the building. That building is not, we don't call it, we don't feel like it's a building. We really feel it's a community within a community. We have a demographic of people that love living there. They love, they've extended their family.
And they're close to the hot dog truck.
Close to the hot dog truck. And I think he loves that.
Now, think about this. The building has been in operation for at least a year. During that entire year, has there been one child in that building?
No, there's never been a child that lived in the building.
So now let's move forward to what you're doing now. Just bring the board up to date on the status of the Foam Factory building just north of the Shoprite.
So Foam Factory, as it's respectfully known, is really Kelsey. Kelsey was an automotive company that was operating out of Bellevue, New Jersey. That building will be Ethos Kelsey. 114 units, mix of one bedrooms and studios. It's actually going to be a step or two above Franklin Avenue, if you can believe it. Franklin Avenue is a beautiful building, and we're very proud of it. We're proud of the finishes. We're proud of the construction. We're proud of what we've done there. We have a pet spa. We have a rooftop lounge. We have a dog run. You know, we're really, we have a gym. Things are, we really felt like we did a great job there with the help and support of course the board. Ethos Kelsey will have a rooftop pool. It'll have multiple amenities spaces. It'll have a rooftop lounge. It'll have a pet spa. It'll have WeWork stations. It'll have multiple gyms. So we think that building is just going to be phenomenal.
And a tiny?
Views of New York City from the.
I was going to say, a tiny little view of New York City.
Views of New York City from the pool, fire pits, gardens. It's really amazing.
All right. So now let's move down to the Richie Auto Body site. Take us through that in general terms, knowing that the architect is going to get specific.
Richie's Auto Body site, which will be Ethos South End, is an absolutely beautiful building. It's got rooftop amenities spaces. It's got second floor amenities spaces. It's got penthouses with exterior balconies. It's got second floor residence with exterior balconies. It's very similar to the Ethos Kelsey in terms of the amenity and the feel. We just feel it's just going to be an amazing project. Same demographics, studios, one bedrooms. So we're following that model.
And when I told you that I was out negotiating and that we were going to have to pick up $200,000 for the environmental, is there any reason why you didn't fire me?
Uh, no. I'm used to moving dirt. So we'll move dirt around. We'll take it, we'll clean it up and make it, we'll make what needs to be.
Madam Chair, your witness.
Any discussion questions for the board? Public? Mr. Sheldon?
Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street.
Could you come up to the mic?
Just one, one very quick question to ask of Mr. Di Biase and Mr. Pacillo. I noticed that in the legal notice published for this case in the Bellevue Times on July 7th, it lists the applicant name as Sound Development LLC, but on the agenda for. Is the mic off? That's even worse than that. That's a two-time, I guess, so. It might be, it might be a bad place. I just turned this one off.
Yeah, you're getting it.
All right, here. All right. I can speak loudly enough. I don't think I need a microphone.
Are you great?
All right, thank you. As I was saying, in the legal notice published in the Bellevue Times on July 7th, the applicant was listed as Sound Development LLC. But on the agenda tonight, it's a different name. It's 4553 Washington Avenue LLC. So, yes, I'd like to just reconcile the two different names for the applicant. Okay, thank you.
Is that your only question?
At this stage, but let me just see what the answer is, and then maybe there'll be a follow-up.
Sound Development is the corporate name, and the limited liability for this project, we took the address of what Richie's is, and we put that there. They're one and the same. And we also published in the Star Ledger, so we did double publications.
Thank you. I was aware that the two groups were essentially the same, but I just wanted to know, why are you using two different names for the same group?
I don't know if that's really reveling to you.
Well, just, it is a bit curious why.
I can tell you that. By setting up a limited liability company for the project, we'll be able to do depreciation and other tax benefits according to the federal statute.
Thank you. Let's play some. It was being done for financial reasons.
You are right. You are absolutely correct.
That's all I had to ask. Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Hi, my name is Christine Dubniewski. I live at 64 Cleveland Street, which is just down the block on the south side, and I have some questions.
The questions are for the witness. He's just spoken. Any questions for him or another time, depending on your question, regarding the building? Maybe you want to wait for the engineer's question?
I just want to know how many parking spaces there are.
Okay, well, we're going to get to that.
I can give you a preview. We designed it according to the ordinance, so there's no parking areas, but you'll hear that testimony. Madam Chair, with your permission, may we call our architects? Thank you.
There you go. This should be fine.
Yep, that works. Madam Chair, Mayor, please be sworn.
Do you swear? The testimony arrived to be all in the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth? Then you can use plain paper, please.
My name is Ed Rawlins. That's R-A-W-L-I-N-G-S.
Check the batteries. Can you give that one?
I'm sure.
Check one, two. Check.
Ed Rawlins, Rawlins Architects. That's R-A-D-L-I-N-G-S. My office is located at 11 Hannover Square in downtown Manhattan.
May I proceed, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Rawlins, please give the board the benefit of your educational background and any licenses you hold.
Yes, I'm licensed in New York State and New Jersey, among other states, those apartment ones. I was educated at Renzler Polytechnic Institute, graduated in 1986, licensed since 1988, had my own firm since 1998.
And by way of background, you were the architect for the Foam Factory project, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you were?
And I know, Mike, for many, many years, we've worked together on many construction projects.
In the city?
In the city. So that's how we got connected.
And you've been part of the design team for the last several years, is that correct?
That is correct.
We've also had workshop meetings on this, and you've been part of that, is that correct? Would you be kind enough to take us through the design of the building?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Maybe what I'll do is I'll start with an animation, let that spin around, and when I can go through the detailed drawings, that's helpful. Okay, so that's the view on Cleveland and then Washington. It's the Washington Street beside with the retail on the lower level, office space on the second level, and then apartments above that. Five floors of apartments, rooftop amenities. You can see at the top of the building, also rooftop amenities at the third floor area, both private outdoor roof space next to the apartments and a common roof space with a common dining.
How many units in the building, Mr. Rawlins?
Eighty-one, right? Eighty-one.
And all?
All studios and one bedrooms, following the model that you described.
And you heard about the sensitivity of not having any children in the building, you understand that, correct?
Absolutely. It's a model that we followed.
And I'm good for that, frankly. Take us through some of the amenities and also the materials that you're suggesting for this building.
Let me just enlarge this. This is a copy of the drawings that were submitted to the board. This is the first page again. It lists the area of the building, eighty-one total units. Let me just zoom out now so you can see those details. Eighty-one total units, sixty-seven one bedrooms, seventeen, fourteen studios, nine hundred and fifty-three square feet of interior amenity, forty-four twenty-nine square feet of exterior amenity space, which I described. Ninety-one total parking spaces. Eighty-one of those are residential, six visitor, two retail, two office. There's some details that we can go into there about EV parking and how that relates to parking, but the total number of parking spaces, we believe, implies. And I would add that when we were designing 740 Washington Avenue, the requirement for the visitors' parking was not there, and that's something that we provided. And I understand that now is town regulation, so we are providing that as well. Second perspective view, that's looking south Washington Avenue. You can see the second floor office space and the ground floor retail space. These are details. Pass over those a little bit briefly, and we can get into the floor plans. I'm going to zoom in on, for those of you that aren't familiar with the site, and maybe what I'll do is I'll zoom in on this little area right here. It's kind of a complicated site because it slopes from approximately ninety-eight to 107 feet, almost 10 feet of slope across the site. And so that led to some challenges in arranging how the parking work is, parking works especially. And so this diagram, which is a little bit complicated to read, basically describes that the parking is arranged in spiral sort of configuration. And then the retail space and the office space are located along the public thoroughfare of Washington. And none of that is located as opposed to be located along Cleveland. So I'm going to zoom back out here. The first floor, which is the entry level for the building, would have the residential entry located over here, close to Washington, off Cleveland. And then the retail space along Washington Avenue. And then the entrance to the parking, which is almost a whole level lower, is at this end on Cleveland. So it slopes up from here to here, at which at some point that becomes the entrance on Cleveland. And so the parking enters here, spirals down in that direction, and then up in that direction, and spirals up three times. And I can go into that in great detail, but I'll just pass over it for this point. The upper floors, the third floor is the first residential floor of the building, and for those of you that have plans, you can go into it. As you can see, we've worked this out into quite detail, two interior amenities spaces here and here at the ends of the building. The fire stairs are located at the ends of the building, and the elevators are located here with daylight out at the border. And then a connection to the back of the building with private outdoor spaces here and here, and then communal outdoor space with barbecue located far away from residential units. So again, these are studios and one bedrooms. The difference between the third floor and the fourth floor is really just that those amenities spaces go away. These stairs move into a more central position, and we pick up a full studio here and here. So we have one bedrooms, one bedrooms, and studios across the building with the elevator centrally located, two elevators, one of them retro-accessible. And as Mike implied, on both the second floor, I'm just going to zoom in, or the third floor really quickly, we have private outdoors terraces here on the south side, so the building is terracing back from Cleveland. And it terraces back again. Pardon me for zooming around here. It terraces back again at the seventh floor. So here you can see that lower terrace at the third floor, and then another terrace here at the seventh floor, which again creates private outdoor spaces for these one-bedroom apartments and one-bedrooms and studios. And then at the top, we have again outdoor recreation space, a barbecue, a sun trellis pergola, and outdoor seating area. Again, pretty similar to what we did at 740 Washington. And then I can just quickly go through materials, and I know there have been some questions about these. And we can go into a little more detail of precedent images, trying to make for a similar palette of 740 Washington, also to fit in with the neighborhood and break down the scale of the building so that it's not a large building, but broken down into more discreet parts. I know that's part of the zoning regulation, but we also think it's something important to do with a building of this scale. So by breaking it at the corner, letting daylight into the vertical circulation core in the corridor. And then also breaking down the materials, we're looking at a palette of metal panel, rain screen, cladding, warm wood color accents. Also, that's rain screen cladding, and I can go into more detail on that later. And then two different colored bricks, what we're calling a red brick and a green brick. So there's really five different materials proposed for the outside of the building, in addition to glass, of course.
Mr. Rawlins, go through the rain screen issue.
Yeah, so rain screen is a system for exterior walls. Not everybody is familiar with it. I will preface it by saying it is not like this, it is not stucco. It is a panelized system with open joints. And it's a very high-performance wall. It's what Net Zero and passive house buildings are using for their onboard. It allows you to put an interior stud backup wall or some sort of backup wall, air-water barrier, very thick insulation, and then a panelized system outboard that. And that panel. And that panelized system can either be a metal panel, it can be terracotta, or it can be a durable cementitious panel. And when I say cementitious, it's a hard board, non-combustible. It's not troweled on or anything like that.
And one other thing, Mr. Rawlins.
Yes?
The developer has agreed to install fire pits on the rooftop, also as an additional amenity.
That's correct, yes, fire pits on the roof. I'm no swimming pool on this one.
Would you, at this point, take us through the finishes inside an apartment and go through them?
Ah, yes, okay, we can do that. We have not detailed out on the drawings here, but I think, Mike, and correct me if I missed or got anything, we were talking about hard floors, wood like wood floors, porcelain tiles in bathrooms, granite-type countertops, either synthetic or actual stone countertops. Sometimes the synthetics are actually more durable than the actual stone. And wall coverings in the corridor, carpet in the corridor usually for boostics, I would say. And what am I going to say?
So our appliance package at the Frankly Avenue, our interior finish package and our cabinets and our tile everything, were pretty high-scale. We use stainless steel appliances, we use quartz countertop, we use porcelain tiles in the bathrooms, we use ceramic tiles on the walls in the bathrooms. We vented all of the fans, we vented all of the kitchen exhausts, we vented all the bathroom exhausts. Each plumber had their own dryer. It's a pretty green building in terms of what the efficiency of the equipment, the efficiency of the hot water heaters, the efficiency of the things that we've selected, the materials that we used and selected. Ethos, Rizzi's Autobody Ethos, Ethos South would be considerably higher in terms of finishes than Ethos Franklin. And Ethos Franklin is really kind of top-notch. Carpet tile hallways, Ed did a great job with the Foam Factory, Ethos Kelsey, he did a really great job with the inset, a lot of the doorways. So the inside doorways will all have miller surrounds. So when you walk to the apartment, we broke up the corridor with miller surrounds, sconces on the inside, decorative lighting, decorative apartment tags. This will be similar.
Mr. Basil, if we were to wrap up your testimony with a bow, we would say that in effect, you're aiming for upscale, upscale, upscale.
So yeah, we believe in Belleville. We believe it's going nowhere but up. We invested in our first project, we invested in our second project, we're looking to invest in our third project. And we want to raise the bar. We don't want to be another building in Belleville. We want to be one of the best buildings built in Belleville. I really think that Ethos is going to be a brand that is really recognized in town. And we, you know, we want people to understand that when you rent in Ethos, you're renting in a top-quality building.
And please explain that Ethos is the trade name for your project.
Ethos is our brand. So, you know, Ethos is our trade name, it's our brand.
Thank you. So are there anything else, Mr. Rawlins, that you would like to point out? Because I know this board understands plans and knows this project and this location better than our team does.
Right, that's certainly for sure. I will say, and maybe it comes across in the renderings and also the rendered elevations, that we spend a lot of energy on doing things that were not necessarily the simplest or the easiest. In other words, we're breaking up the scale constantly, thinking about doing that. So if the sods on both, on both streets modulate inward and outward, and you can kind of see that in these areas where the lighter cream brick is the part pushing out, and then the darker rainscreen area is the part pushing in. And then this framed gray area is, this dark frame is the frame that you're seeing, which ends and kind of captures the portion on Washington Avenue. And again, we're trying to break down the scale, use different materials, and make it a more friendly building. I also wanted to add that, and it's not really coming across in great detail, that we specifically didn't, we had challenges with space to wrap the parking with retail or office space. So we didn't, and we also didn't think that was appropriate coming down Cleveland Street. So we opted not to do that. And so this area, what we call the cleave between the two volumes is the residential entrance. Very biased towards Washington Avenue. And then the area that is behind it, that is the parking, is developed with this pretty detailed kind of brick detail on the facade, so that it breaks it up into scales horizontally and vertically. And also is kind of a veil detail where you may be able to get little bits of light through there. So it's a very, what we think is a very pretty wall, it's not just a blank wall along Cleveland.
Now that's on Cleveland Street, correct?
That's correct, just on Cleveland.
And that little dark area, that's where the gate is?
This lower portion right here, where I'm moving my cursor, that would be the overhead door.
Okay, good.
And then this is the exit door for the fire stair, and this is the door that connects to the trash room.
Gotcha, okay.
So if we want to get into those kind of details, there is a trash compactor and a chute that drops waste centrally in the building. And then there is a holding space right next to that overhead door, so that it can be brought in. Yeah, which is fully within the building. And I think that Joe's gonna talk to those sort of things.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, to the extent that the architecture melts into the planning aspect, you and I went over the planner's report, and you and I made a determination that the planner's report was thorough, efficient, and professional, is that correct?
That is correct, and it was a very nice report.
And we also made a decision that we are going to go along with the recommendations in that report, is that correct, sir?
That is correct.
So let's talk about the street scape. We're gonna follow the report from the planner on that, is that correct?
That is correct. I know there were some paving details that were discussed.
Yes.
Charles.
And trees.
And street trees. Both of those items were discussed. And the other items that were discussed in the report were house numbers, signage combined.
That's correct.
And increasing the height of the retail as much as possible, as much as the slope of the parking will allow.
So the one thing that we were sort of joking about with the planner is that the signage will be tasteful and will not be anything like the word we use, them's lost age, is that correct?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
And to the extent that the architecture will melt into the engineer's report, you and I went over the engineer's report, and we also said that that report was thorough, efficient, and professional, and that we would go along with those recommendations, is that correct, sir?
That is correct, Tom.
Is there anything else you'd like to address?
Not that I can think of. Well, if questions come up, I'm more than happy to answer.
Madam Chair, your witness?
Yeah, so the street scape, you're gonna do that down Cleveland too, right? Down around the sides, you're along with the trees on both sides. And I actually like the landscaping you have on the upper levels of the building, on the two terraces. Is that something that's actually gonna be there? Or are we just making believe and if that's private space, it's not there?
No, I believe that is intended, I don't want to speak for Mike, of course, but I believe that is intended to be there, especially up to the upper most roof of the private rooms.
We feel that, we build as representative. Not only do we build as representative, as we're involved in the project and in the development, if we can make improvements in the landscape and improvements in the building, we're happy to do it. This is a big investment for us, a few trees, a few plants. It is, you know, we, you know, we want to make this building great. We're not going to chimp out on some landscaping up on the roof and down to the second floor, or out at the street. So.
I think the specific question is, is that, can you pull up that first page? Is that tenant space? Is that their balcony space, or is that public amenity space?
The lower level looks like, I don't know.
The upper vegetation, it's all up there.
So Mayor, this area right here is private outdoor space.
Right, private outdoors, so that's a little terrace.
And as well, this area is private outdoor space.
Okay.
And we will plant that private outdoor space.
You will?
We will plant that private outdoor space.
So if I rent an apartment, my terrace is gonna have your plantings on it?
It's gonna have a planting on it.
And you're gonna water it for it?
It will have, it will have an automated watering system. The reason why the plants are there is because it softens up that elevation, and we think it adds a very nice element to the outside of the building.
Oh, it does, that's why I'm asking, I think I'd do it like that.
We have it on our roof now, we take care of it on our roof, we water it now. So it's gonna be the same thing, it'll be pretty much an automated system. Of course, technically we'd have some, you know, if they want to pour some weeds or if they're unhappy with the state, of course, they would have the ability to do that, but we would generally maintain the power.
Very nice. And the amenities, boy, are up there. Those interior amenity spaces, I think they're four twenty square feet on the third floor. The corners, you know what you're gonna have in those, or?
Well, we want a pet spa, and we kind of, we have a little bit of open discussion. We know that the board has certain things that they like to see, or we know, maybe, you know. So we, one of them we thought would be a wee workspace, one of them we want to put a pet spa in, because our buildings are all pet-friendly, and we've had a really good response from people with pets. And the pet's spa is used every day, the dog run is used every day. It's actually used more than a gym, so.
Gyms are a waste. Gyms are a waste, we're over gyms.
Are there gyms in here?
Nothing.
So we're open to flexibility in the amenity space. We could put a gym, we would put a gym, we definitely would like to put the pet spa in. We definitely would like to have a workspace area, because when you have these type of apartments, sometimes you just want to get out the dog, and you want to just have a little bit of a different environment. So those are kind of our concept plans. Lounge area, we'd like to put, we'd like, we also talked about kick-around game room, which would be a pool table and maybe a, you know, a foosball.
But where are you putting walls, though?
So we have.
We have two. Third floor is nine hundred, two rooms on the third floor.
Two rooms on the third floor to equal about nine. So we have to make some decisions on what is the highest priority.
Is there a dog run?
No, the building does not permit for a dog run. We might be able to do it on the second floor, though, we did talk about that.
I mean, if you're gonna appeal to dogs, you gotta have a dog spa. So I like those, yeah, those spas.
Kind of in that area, we had a reason to talk about. Is that the right one? Is that through the second floor?
Actually, it's the third. We've been challenged with our story number.
We deserve this building to a little.
So we thought about that area potentially as a small dog run.
Right, we have these private outdoor spaces here and here, and then a big common area. And that could be used in a lot of different ways, so it's pretty flexible.
We could also commandeer when there are private areas that have a dog run.
We could.
I mean, if you're gonna appeal to pet owners and you're gonna have a pet spa or a dog spa, you should probably have a place for little guys to run around.
We also have, we also have a fair amount of area up on the upper roof, Mike.
Yeah, a lot of space.
But I think the mayor's point is well taken. If we're gonna be consistent, we need to be consistent all the way, so we should separate that space for them. And if the board does approve this, we would accept that as a condition, correct?
Of course.
There's definitely a lot of room up here. I don't think this will be filled with mechanical. There you go.
Thank you, Michael.
Any other questions?
I have a question. The engineering report that you said you were willing to work with the recommendations, it's sort of a mixed bag of, some of them are recommendations and just some of them are things that we're looking to testify to. So I just wanted to get some of these on your record.
What I can do with that counsel is that I actually have an engineer.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, we can wait for that.
Yes, I appreciate that.
Although usually the lighting falls under the architect's. So I was gonna ask more specifically about the outdoor lighting. Are there any street scape lighting or anything along the building?
Yes, we would be, we would be proposing lighting on the face of the building to light the sidewalk. Also, light the building up and down and make sure also that it's not like pollution-type lighting.
Now, patrons that are going to frequent the retail space, do they have access to the parking facility, or is it all private?
Uh, no, there is, two of the parking spaces are slated as required for retail space, and two are for the office space.
And this is all on the second floor or first floor?
Retail's on the first floor.
Retail's on the first floor.
Yeah, offices are on the second floor. And the parking ranges from the cellar up to the second.
Okay.
So there will be spaces adjacent.
So the spaces are for the people coming to frequent the retail space?
That's correct.
And if that is true, all the ADA spaces are on the second floor? Be on the first floor, so they would have access, easier access for them to?
Yeah, normally I would say yes. But in this particular situation, because of, if I go back to that slope site scenario, what we end up with is a pretty complex split-level building on the base of the building. And I'm just gonna zoom in so that I can hopefully describe that in some detail to you. We put the ADA spaces up at the second floor level because the way the parking works out, and Joe can talk to this in more detail. That's the really nice flat part that lines up with the elevators. In the cellar level, it's pitching to get us down enough to get under that first floor. And in fact, the first floor parking actually has a little stair here that goes down to the lobby. Because the first floor and the, and the first floor of parking, if I zoom in right here, this maybe tells you a lot. The first floor of parking is about, it's about four, four and a half feet above the level of the lobby level, which is different than the retail level, which is higher and lower than the sloping side of the sidewalk. So we were scratching our heads on that for a little while.
Got you.
Thank you.
Open up to the public, anyone has a question? Mr. Sheldon?
Deputy Mayor Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. Just a couple of questions about the parking situation. Am I correct in assuming that all of the vehicular activity is through Cleveland Street on the north side? There's no driveway on the Washington Avenue frontage?
That is correct. There were curb cuts previously, or there are curb cuts now on Washington Avenue, and also on Cleveland closer to Washington Avenue. Those two would be removed, and the one curb cut would be added.
Plus what I was gonna lead up to, since there are no driveways, entrances or exits along Washington Avenue with this proposal, you're actually reclaiming some parking, on-street parking spots, I assume?
That's correct.
So there's actually a net plus here with this project?
Yeah, there's definitely a net plus on Washington. And on Cleveland, I'm gonna let Joe talk to that one a bit.
Well, that's sort of an encouraging thing, you know, usually this board is accustomed to me screaming at them, the developers, the impact that the projects would have, usually is negative. In this case, this is actually a positive aspect, yet another positive aspect of this project.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would add to that, that when we were working through the details of it, we felt that it's not a large number of cars, so it is introducing some cars on the Cleveland. But it also is taking cars off of Washington, left and right turns. And that's a big street, so.
So I mean, anything to improve the commercial retail aspect of Washington Avenue is appreciated. At the beginning of your testimony, you had a little chart of the parking situation. Could you bring that up, those numbers? I just had a question about.
And I think Joe can probably speak to that in great detail. If you want to let me do that?
I would prefer if we have our traffic expert do that and ask all the questions about that.
All right, I'll wait until.
I would appreciate that.
All right, I'll wait until your traffic person testifies and asks a question about that. Thank you. Thank you.
Christine W. F. T., and again, I live on Cleveland Street, so I'm really concerned about the number of parking spaces. Because once you put that door in, that's one space, at least two spaces that are on. And you have Soler Domenio, which is across the street, and they have a lot of cars that they can't park. So they go on the street. While they found the event spaces, which is on Washington, on the other side of the street, there's, they always park. The Essex is gonna be down the block. I don't even know how many spaces they have. And you just said, I mean, I thought I heard you had some EV charging stations, or propose how many?
I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Joe show.
If you would give me the courtesy of holding all those relevant questions to our traffic expert, I would appreciate that.
One other thing, has Belleville done anything about mass transportation to accommodate all these wonderful people who are gonna be living on the block? all these wonderful people who are gonna be living on the block? Is there a train or light rail planned in the near future, in the next ten years?
Do you have a light rail already?
Where?
Is there a light?
Oh, but not on Washington.
Not on Washington. But there's, talk about shuttle service as well.
Okay.
If you don't mind, we're also doing a study on a jitney service. We're doing a study on that. So jitney service is going from new development to new development to new development to take them to where they need to go to.
I'm really, I'm very concerned about Cleveland Street because as it is, we get everybody's, I mean, we get a mass amount of cars. There's two small apartment buildings towards the end of the block on Cleveland that don't provide for any parking. Well, one does, but the other one doesn't. I have a lot of parking. I have every one driveway. But I notice that people just park in my driveway. So I can't get in or out. So that's what concerns me. And last but not least, what about tax abatements? Are you offering these developers any incentives or only for the additional police?
Yeah, that's really not in this discussion.
It's really a mayor and council question, but this board can't factor that into making their decision.
Okay. Just a question. Mr. Frank Antoni? Please, only questions.
It's Mr. Frank Antoni, one twenty-nine Mall Cross Road. Who regards a follow-up of this lady saying on Cleveland Street, have you been there, doing a day, and seen a phone line? I'm a contractor. I've done two jobs on Cleveland Street. One job, I have closed six doors. Impossible to park there. I gotta double park, drop the doors off, drive around fire.
Mr. Frank Antoni, would you like to wait for the traffic? People come up, that might...
What?
The traffic, you have a traffic. So maybe that might...
Well, he was talking about the parking.
Right, inside, basically.
So I might question him. He said, now, on Cleveland Street, right now, people park there, even though there's a driveway cut there. They park all along the first hundred feet from Washington Avenue. Why it's gonna be eliminated with the doors there? If those parking spaces are gonna be eliminated.
I think just to defer the questions, all the parking questions should be answered by our parking consultant or traffic consultant.
Thank you. There's no more questions? Move on?
May I call my next witness?
Yes.
Charles Osterkorn.
Do you swear from the testimony or not? Do you feel she's been up to it?
Yes, I do.
Then you can just take pleasure.
Charles Osterkorn, O-S-T-E-R-K-O-R-N.
Sir Osterkorn, please give the board the benefit of your educational background and any licenses that you hold.
I graduated from New York College of Engineering. I went back to school to get a surveying degree. I'm a licensed surveyor, engineer, and I stay in Jersey. I've been in business about forty years. And I've appeared before the board.
Will it accept these credentials?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see if we can do this in less than two minutes.
Okay.
Have you read the Township Engineers Report, Tom Harris' report?
Yes, I have.
Are you in a position to agree with the recommendations of Tom Harris' report?
Yes.
Will you implement Tom Harris' report?
We will make all those revisions.
And if there are any changes to his report and any further conditions as we go through construction, we will abide by those?
Yes.
And how far did you come to testify this evening?
I came from Whiteoff.
To say yes four times?
Yes.
We are done with this testimony, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any quick discussion on this? I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure.
Members of the public will, I don't know how much, vote. We're still into the parking. We'll wait for...
Oh, about parking, okay.
Okay.
Did you hear again? Michael Sheldon, forty-seven Floyd Street. Just for the application of the community, what were Mr. Harris' engineering concerns? Usually listed amongst the concerns is storm water mitigation. This is a relatively large building, a lot of impervious coverage. Could Mr. Harris, please tell us what his primary engineering concerns are, though?
That was in the report. The boards, even though the existing site has, is totally impervious, the board still wishes to see a reduction in the post-construction runoff. And I was, the architect, I know seven forty Washington Avenue, the other project, the architect incorporated some green infrastructure in the building to help runoff also.
So there will be proper storm runoff mitigation?
Yes.
Retention basins, et cetera, the usual, kind of, technically. Thank you. Just all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Frank Antoni?
Is this about the parking?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, this next one is our parking planning experts, and this will probably take a little longer. And this is our last witness.
Good evening.
Do you swear from the testimony or not? Do you feel she's been up to it?
Yes, I do.
Steve, what are your thoughts?
Yep. My name is Joseph Steiger, S.T.A.I.G.A.R. Business address is seventeen Shremont Drive, East New York.
Mr. Steiger, you're actually wearing two professional hats this evening. But let's go through your credentials first as an engineer.
Yes. Master of Science, Bachelor of Science degree, Civil Engineering, New Jersey Institution of Technology. I've also been a natural professor of traffic engineering courses at NJIT. I have a professional engineer's license in the state of Jersey, as well as other states in northeast, and a professional planner's license in the state of Jersey as well. Have appeared before this board in the capacity, mainly as a traffic engineer on many occasions in the township, but also as a professional planner as well. And I have to say, throughout the state of Jersey, well over a thousand occasions, mainly in the capacity as a special engineer, but well over a hundred, hundreds of occasions as a professional planner as well.
Will it accept his...
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's just get some basic foundations on the record. Mr. Steiger, you also have reviewed the Township Engineer Report, is that correct, sir?
Correct.
And you're also in a position to say that you will agree with the recommendations of that report?
Yes.
And if there are changes going forward during construction, that you will also adopt those changes and listen to Mr. Harris, is that correct, sir?
As we always have been, yes.
So that takes care of that part. Why don't you take us through the parking configuration, and then we'll talk about flexible C2 variances?
Yes. Briefly, traffic, about traffic. We did take traffic counts at the key intersection of Washington and Cleveland to get the number of traffic movements at that intersection, and also to run a capacity analysis. Capacity analysis is a way of modeling the intersection, taking the peak hour volumes, lefts, throes, and rights, and then analyzing what the level of service is as an operational characteristic of the intersection related to the average delay. We calculate what the average delay is for left turns, through movements, and right turns. A little bit peculiar intersection in the sense that the east side of Cleveland Street's a two-way, but the west side is a one-way going westbound only. So there's nothing coming out in the eastbound direction onto Washington off of Cleveland. But that intersection operates very well. Cleveland Street operates at level service C, and Washington operates at level service A. These are all acceptable levels, just like in grade school. Those levels of service range from A through F, or in that A to B and C range at the intersection. So operates real well. When we analyze what the increase in traffic would be, we do have an auto body shop. It's a relatively big shop. It's seventy-eight hundred square feet building approximately. And we're able to develop trip generation numbers for that type of land use based on the size, based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE is the acronym. Just as we also project what the traffic increase, traffic volumes would be for the eighty-one residential apartments, the small retail, the small office as well. The increase in travel, the proposed use, relatively modest increase, mainly because when you look at residential uses, it's kind of different strokes for different folks. Some people will leave six o'clock in the morning to go to work. Some people may not leave until nine, nine-thirty in the morning. So you have a range of about three hours that doesn't concentrate the traffic volumes that are generated by our residential use. Unsimilar to a, particularly a commercial use, where you may have all the employees come in or leave during specific hours, or customers coming in during specific hours. The eighty-one units, retail and the office, would generate thirty-two trips in the peak hours. So the peak hours that we studied were from seven to nine AM and four to six PM, typical rush hours. So we'll see thirty-two vehicles in or out from the proposed development. Using the same information, the ITE rates, the auto body shop generates eighteen trips in the morning, twenty-four trips in the evening peak hour. So we're talking about a magnitude of increase of eight trips in the morning, fourteen trips in the afternoon. That does not change the levels of service at that intersection. It remained at level service A and C there. So there's no degradation of the level of service. That's an indication of whether we're gonna have an impact or not on traffic conditions. The key here that I've heard mainly from the public is parking. How is the parking gonna work? Are we gonna see an overflow of parking onto the street? We use your township's ordinance as the requirements for parking. Your planner did a very good analysis, right down to the hundredth of a parking space, to determine what the requirements are, how many parking spaces we need per your ordinance. So taking into account eighty-one units, we need eighty-one parking spaces. We have, we also have provided for guest parking as well. We need eight point one spaces. The retail needs one point eight spaces, and the office needs one point nine. We add those four numbers up, we need ninety-two point eight, rounding up to ninety-three spaces. That is our requirement per your ordinance. That assumes that the residential peaks, parking peaks, the same time that the retail peaks, the same time that the guests peak, the same time that the office peak. It's not gonna happen. They're gonna peak at different times during the day. But let's assume worst-case scenario, they do peak all the time at the same time. We need ninety-three parking spaces are required. We have ninety-one. So from a physical aspect, we're two spaces short. But as the board probably knows, that the New Jersey State Legislature did adopt last year, a year ago, the requirement for electric vehicle charging stations, right? We need to provide fifteen percent of our parking spaces, fifteen percent of the ninety-three or fourteen parking spaces are to be EV, either, one-third of them will be operated as EVs upon the CO, and then over the next three years, it'll be implemented, that the rest of them will be in stage as well. They have to be EV-ready. Conduits have to be put in at day one. So we provide fifteen, but we'll also get credit for parking spaces as well. We get credit for ten spaces. Ten percent of the requirement of ninety-three spaces. So that round up to ten spaces. So in essence, we have, two ways of looking at it. We need ninety-three spaces, we have a hundred and one. The ninety-one plus the ten credit for the EVs. So per the ordinance and per state statute, we're eight spaces over what the requirement is based on that. So we do meet, and I know that the public is frustrated with other properties. I've heard the public say, you know, some places don't have enough parking, they don't have any parking at all, and they park on the street. That's all the availability that a lot of the properties in the area have. We are gonna be self-sufficient. We're gonna have sufficient parking to handle our own parking and not have an overflow. And we're using Franklin Avenue as a test for this site. You heard from Michael that that property is fully occupied, fifty-six units. It's, it has cars. But if you go there at any time, you'll see empty parking spaces. So while we're providing one per unit, we're not gonna have all units have a car or rely upon a car, or own a car, park a car as well. So we're expecting the same relationship on Franklin Avenue to happen at this site. Even if it doesn't happen, we still have enough parking, as I pointed out.
Mr. Steiger, let me just interject here. It's a fact that parking is challenged on Cleveland, and our neighbor has said that. And that's a fact.
Correct.
And we're in the no-spin zone here.
Yeah.
Will this project make that situation worse?
No. And in fact, to a small degree, because I heard the one gentleman point out, as Ed, our architect, pointed out as well, we're removing one driveway. We have a driveway on Washington Avenue that we're going to close, which opens up a parking space. The other benefit, on Cleveland at least, we have a driveway that's almost, existing driveway, it's almost right on top of the intersection. That driveway is right at the intersection. You measure it twenty-seven feet from the curve line on Washington Avenue. We're gonna push that all the way to the end of the property, closing that near driveway to the intersection and moving that to the far end of the property. So there's a net increase in parking on the street that we're providing as well. So not only would we be self-sufficient, having our own parking compartments, we're making available at least one parking space to the public.
And for the record, within the framework of sound traffic engineering principles, do you believe that this parking plan can be implemented without negatively impacting on the zoning ordinance or the zone plan of the township of Belleville?
Well, the fact that we do meet the ordinance requirements, I can come to that conclusion. But also, taking a look at similar properties, most notably the Franklin Avenue development that Mr. Silva has built, we're going to have sufficient parking.
Now, let's put on your planning hat. And you have reviewed the planning report by yourself and with me, is that correct?
Correct.
And you are adopting the planning report, or your report, is that correct?
Correct.
So let's go through some of the flexible C2 variances and put that testimony under it.
Yeah. One thing I'd like to preface the planning testimony, we have an existing non-permitted use on that property. The auto body in the BG zone that we're in, is a non-permitted use. We're getting rid of that non-permitted use, and we're putting in a compliant use, permitted use on the property. So that is just a very good plus in terms of what's happening on the site. So we do, we do not need to use variances because of that fact, but we do need some C variances, both variances. And most of them, if not all of them, are of a C2 criteria, the flexible C, where the benefits outweigh the detriments on it. And I went through Mary Ann's report, and I'd like to make the points of the variances related to her, to her nomenclature or numbering of the... We need a loading zone. Per calculations, we need, we need ten, we need point one nine loading spaces on this site. Very small loading space. What's telling us is that loading is gonna be needed on this site, but it's a smaller aspect of it. When you use township's calculations, we need point one nine, obviously round up, we need one loading space. We do not have a loading space. One thing that we would ask the town council is to provide a loading area... space. One thing that we would ask the town council is to provide a loading area in front of the property, not twenty-four hours, but at least during the day for moving for those Amazon deliveries, um, that would be utilized. So it may be from, say, seven or eight in the morning till six or seven at night. During the nighttime, that loading space could be used for parking, for public parking. So we're just looking for a time limitation. This board cannot grant that. We have to go to the, to the mayor and council for that. And that's something that we would be, um, asking them, um, because we don't want, we don't want trucks, moving trucks or delivery trucks blocking Cleveland Street, uh, as well. Uh, so we believe that, that, that can be granted, um, for purposes, uh, the, the positive aspects of, um, uh, of it, um, of, of conservation of lands as, as well as less impervious cover. Providing a loading zone that's used, um, with the pavement and everything, uh, that's used minimally throughout the day is better to have, um, have a flexibility of using that parking, um, on the street or that loading on the street. As I said before, we are adding a parking space, so, um, uh, on the street in the area. Uh, so the utilization of that loading zone, particularly if we, we only use it during the day, is going to be a plus or a positive.
So, uh, just, I don't mean to interrupt you. So for purposes of the application, you're looking for the variance because you need one.
Yes.
At some point in time, you're going to seek from the mayor and council, an area in front of Cleveland, on Cleveland for this loading zone?
That's correct. Yes. Yes. And that will be a stipulation that we do seek that, that loading zone from the, the mayor and council. Uh, parking stall size is the next one, nine by nineteen is your, uh, ordinance standard. This is not applicable to the R S I S because we are a mixed use, uh, that shares parking building and access. Uh, so the nine by eighteen is an R S I S standard. So we revert to your ordinance requirements, which is nine by nineteen. But the nine by eighteen obviously is, is, uh, an accepted number, works very well. And, um, uh, I think that, that also can be granted, um, with the C two variance where benefits outweigh the detriments. Uh, we do have, um, ten percent compact cars, uh, nine out of the ninety-one that we're providing. Again, compact spaces, we're going to have compact cars. Ten percent is a very low number. Typically, we see thirty, forty or fifty percent, uh, action utilization. So again, the granting of that, uh, can be, um, can be, uh, obtained without any detriment at all. Ground floor area, um, seventeen thousand and five square feet is required. Uh, our, uh, retail will be nineteen twenty square feet is going to be provided. Again, we don't, we don't see the need for a large retail use. You can see that how we, how Ed has designed the building. We do provide a frontage and a, you know, exposure of, especially on the Washington Avenue commercial corridor or that commercial, um, space fits in very well, in my opinion. And again, that can be granted without any detriment and the, uh, benefits outweighing any detriment. Ground floor height, uh, fourteen feet is required, twelve point four is provided. Again, you heard from, uh, Mr. Rawlings, uh, why we had that difficulty because of the, um, the changes in elevation, uh, is how it can fit into the building. Again, we're asking for that relief based on a C two, uh, criteria. Uh, ground floor facade, seventy-five percent glazing on Cleveland Street, and we do not comply, although Washington Street complies where our retail, our commercial, uh, space is. Uh, we're going to provide, um, architectural features to, to compensate for what might be glazing, but we're not providing the glazing because there's parking there and all you're going to see is, is parking spaces. So we're asking for that re, relief for the, uh, for aesthetic reasons and, and, and the benefits that are obtained from that. Uh, ground floor garage is, is required to be wrapped, um, uh, by the commercial and on, on, uh, Cleveland Street, frontage, it does not conform. And I think that's a, um, that ties in with the ground floor use variance as well. We're not, we're not having a, uh, complete wrap around. We're on a corner, uh, cornered block, you know, so we have two frontages and we have the difficulty of the, uh, of the, uh, providing that on both, um, on both streets. Um, I believe that's it. Um, there were a couple other ones that, um, uh, that Mary Ann, uh, pointed out, streetscape signs, building signs, um, main wall setback. Uh, a lot of these, um, uh, I think either Ed had, um, addressed, or we will comply, or we're going to accommodate those, so they are not variances. I think she more or less pointed them out that, well, if you don't provide it, you need a variance. We're going to provide and comply with those aspects.
And a point of clarification, on the rear wall, we're actually building our new wall where the existing wall is, is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, that's a sidewall. So the sidewall, um, uh, on Cleveland Street away from, uh, Washington Avenue is an existing wall that's there.
Separates us from the residential.
Correct.
So now the catch-all for the record, within the framework of sound planning principles, do you believe that these flexible C variances can be granted without negatively impacting on this own plan or the, um, ordinances of the township of Belleville?
Yes, I, I think the, um, the beautiful renderings themselves, I think, speak for itself in, in improving the aesthetics, uh, in the area, getting rid of the non-permitted uh, use. Um, and, um, and as I pointed out before, I think all the C variances that we are requesting can be granted without any detriment to the neighborhood or the zone plan or the zoning ordinances of the township of Belleville.
And can we also throw into that mix the fact that we are taking care of an environmental condition as a positive development?
Absolutely. A lot, a lot of benefits, uh, in addition to the ones I pointed out, um, by the implementation of this proposed project.
Thank you. Madam Chair, your witness?
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry. I just want to thank you for your testimony. Uh, when you start looking at the traffic study, uh, being in a public place where I work, uh, a lot since COVID, hybrid situations, a lot of traffic has diminished. It didn't pick up, it diminished. So I think those numbers are perfect, if not high, on the other side of people going.
Exactly. I, I think we've all learned how to Zoom, how to do virtual meetings, how to make phone calls and not get into a car and go to meetings. I haven't been to a meeting, project meeting, probably in many, many months. And we used to, that used to be a mainstay, probably do maybe ten or twelve, uh, a week. And not doing them anymore. We all get on our computer and a lot more efficient. Um, so the, the point being is that as a traffic engineer, we've seen traffic volumes basically diminished during COVID. They have grown, but I don't think they're ever going to go up to where they were because we've all learned we don't need to get in that car to do what we need to do.
Exactly. That, that's one, that's one thing I wanted to share. And the other thing, as far as Cleveland Street, I don't know. And this is out there, this is a conversation. Are there any, um, uh, permanent parking or handicap parking? Because I do know in Google that we do need to address handicap parking because in the past, when it has been given out, right, wrong or indifferent, uh, there are tight, I should say, there's a process around it, right? If you have a flat driveway, we should look at those things too, as, I'm talking to the public, we should look at those things. We should go back as a town and look at those, and which will free up more parking on the street.
Making sure that-
And making sure they're compliant, making sure that, hey, you have a driveway, it's flat, you don't need a parking here. I'm, I'm just making this a conversation, not commenting on yours, but these are things to look at to open up parking throughout Belleville, not only for this project, but throughout, but also for all. That's all. Wanted to share my opinion.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Yeah, a couple things. So I'm glad you just mentioned about the standards, uh, the trip counts and, and how it's all calculated. Those are all, and you, you said it perfectly, those are all pre-COVID calculations.
Yes.
So we've seen everything go down since COVID, but we're still holding you to a standard of, a higher standard of, of pre-COVID standards.
Yes. What I provided actually is a conservative of projections.
Next thing. So it was testified before, earlier, that, uh, prior projects that maybe Sound did, didn't necessarily have a visitor parking requirement. A new zoning that we instituted within the last year or so now requires buildings over X amount of units to provide ten percent of parking, all that. So you are providing six extra spots and that's where the variance comes in for the two extra ones. Um, I know in prior projects we talked about either having an onsite zipcar. Um, I don't know if we did that with Franklin Avenue or not, but we discussed that about providing, since we don't know if people are going to be having cars, uh, either a dedicated spot or having a, a spot dedicated for a zipcar, if that could be considered. And lastly, we mentioned loading zone and coming before the mayor and council. When we do that loading zone, potentially the council agrees. Uh, not only would we do a loading zone, but I think we make that an Uber lift drop-off area too.
Right. Yes.
Excellent. Good point. Any other discussion?
I have a question. Is the, is the owner going to charge parking for tenants?
There's no charge.
Great. Because we, we approved the project on Belmont Avenue and we weren't aware as a board that they were charging parking. And when you go down Belmont Avenue at night, you can't even get down the street now because there's sixty to seventy cars parked on the street who don't want to pay the part.
I think they get one spot for free. It's the extra spots.
Well, you just can't maneuver down Belmont Avenue. And I was not aware that, uh, they were going to have to pay the part.
All of our apartments come with, all of our apartments come with a spot. If you go to the Ethos Franklin Avenue site, if you go right now, if you go tomorrow morning, everybody is mandated to take a spot. People say, can we, like, decline the spot and not pay, you know, not, and get a reduction in rent? They come with the spot, it's, it's part of the package. So there is no additional rent for the parking space. If you go there right now, you'll find that that parking lot will be half, more than half empty. I'm, I'm not sure where all these cars are. There's, there's nothing, there's never any cars in the parking lot. There's, I go in, I'm like, okay, your handicap is never being used. Uh, half of the lot is never being used. So, um, we don't believe that our, our, our bill would impact the parking negatively at all.
Yeah. Because I think that would negatively impact the neighbors. And I'm glad to hear that you're not trying to-
I, I can tell you real life model. I'm there every day. I'm there in the morning, I'm there at night. I, I'll be there tonight, I'll be there tomorrow morning. You pull into the gate, we have a secure gate, pull in and that parking lot will be empty. Thirty percent full, at a maximum, thirty percent full, most of the time.
But, but all the apartments are full.
All the apartments are full.
Yeah. I mean, that's another question I had, and I was actually going to ask about your, what goes on throughout the day in your parking lot over there, what the occupancies are in those spots at noon, at three o'clock, five o'clock, nighttime. I mean, right there might not be a good concept for a shared parking idea. If you use like the ground level, maybe cater to, to some of the retail users during the day and then at night kick them out, close it off. I, I don't, I don't know how well that works. I know it's a model that you used, Marion. Uh, if you're dealing with a lot of the, a lot of vacant spaces like that and we're dealing with maybe an overflow of traffic during the day, people trying to do their dry cleaning, uh, get food at the store around the corner, or they got nowhere to park, maybe that could be an idea. You can charge obviously for the space per, you know, twenty minutes, an hour, whatever it is that you do. But again, that was one of the questions that I-
As, as the developer in town are always open to suggestions and open to possibilities. I can tell you that when we, when we built Ethos Franklin Avenue, from the high tension wires all the way down in front of Nardone's, in front of the food stand, in front of the two, it was a two-family house, there was a food stand, there was Nardone's gas station, came around the corner, there was another curb cut, then there was another two-family. We, we've probably added twenty spaces on the street.
One of the concerns on Hilton was parking, but now they, they never had a problem ever.
And I actually think we have the very same exact scenario at Richie's. Richie's curb cut is not a single curb cut, it's wider. And, and you're going to recapture all that parking. Then the coming along Cleveland, you're going to recapture that. So really the net, the net gain is the entire front end part of the corner.
Well, it would be my big part of that loading, but yeah, I understand.
So anyway, yes, no, no charge for parking.
Thanks. And the, the parking space that we will land on Washington will be a meter of space. There's not additional revenue coming into this.
Just another little benefit. And there will be a zipcar in, in this building.
So is that-
There will be a zipcar in, in Richie's.
Okay. Where, where does that fit into the?
We, we, we can put it in one of the, uh, addition, one of the spaces. And supposedly, and I don't know what the exact criteria is, so if you put a zipcar and you get some additional credits for parking because it reduces parking volume. I don't know what that criteria is. We like the idea of a zipcar. We have community bikes at Ethos Franklin. We'll have community bikes at Ethos, um, South. And the bikes we, we find people use and, you know, zipcar is something that we like to do.
Washington Avenue, that's your, that bike lane.
Yeah. So I, I, I'm sorry. I'll move it to the chair. Did you say meter parking?
On Washington, Washington.
Oh, Washington, because we are actually doing the streetscape, right, Mayor?
Yeah.
On twenty-three, on, in twenty-twenty-three, how will that coexist? How, how can we coexist and get that done altogether? If I'm saying that right? Right? Or we're going to be, we're putting meters until, right, going along Washington Avenue.
When, when they close up that curb-
Yeah, now we'll give it a spot. Yeah.
We're, yeah, we're closing that driveway on Washington, it becomes a parking, available parking space.
Gotcha, okay.
You can put the-
Oh, we can, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
She said no, put the, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Been taking the quarters out.
Sorry about that.
No money?
I, I have a lot to do now. Taking quarters out of machines is a pain in the neck.
Anyone else?
All right, we'll open up to the public.
With all due respect, I know you did a feasibility study, uh, about the traffic, but you're not there at seven or eight or nine PM on a weekend. Uh, and unfortunately, we have the overflow from the restaurant, we have the overflow from La May Thong, and I'm sure with the singles group, you're going to have guests that are coming in. And six spaces doesn't seem, seem like a lot. I don't, I've lived in apartments for probably forty-five years before I moved to Belleville. And there was never enough parking spaces. I lived in the Galaxy in Gutenberg and they give, give you one spot, but there's two people, three people per apartment. So I, I, I question, uh, okay, you have studios, you have, uh, how many? Fourteen studios and rest are, uh, one bedroom, Friday, single occupancy. You're going to have couples. And when you have couples, there's usually maybe two cars. This is my question. You might not have enough spots. Uh, and you can't compare Franklin Avenue to Washington Avenue in Cleveland because it's, it's two different places. And we, like I said, we have an overabundance of cars as it is. Go to Popeyes, go to that, that laundromat at night, it's jumping. You can't get a spot there. How, you know, you're going to increase it with the Essex, you're going to have this place and it's beautiful. But, oh, and also with your electric vehicles, how are you going to address that? So you have twenty people that are going to have electric vehicles, you have ten spots, you have to rotate them. How are you going to do that? Because you can't leave them there overnight. Hmm? I mean, I have an electric vehicle. I'm the only one there in my, my driveway. I charge it overnight. But if I go to a supercharger or let's say I go to the, uh, uh, the Target where they have the chargers, you get fined if you're there longer than five minutes after you're fully charged. What's the story there? How are you going to address that?
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Franchin, Tom?
The architect, uh, mentioned that you're removing the driveway on Washington Avenue and creating another parking space. But then you, uh, propose that make it a loading zone so that negates that parking space.
Well, we're going to make it a loading zone during the day. It'll certainly be available for parking to the residents at night. We don't need it from seven o'clock at night till seven o'clock in the morning. We need it during the daytime period. So when residents come home and they want to park, there's going to be an additional parking space that's not there now.
I'm a businessman on Washington Avenue for fifty years. We need parking. The businesses need parking, uh, during the day. So that's another parking space taken off. And I understand because I've been telling this board that today we need more parking because today everybody's shopping online and we got trucks delivering and, uh, Ubers and, uh, food deliveries all day long. Come to Washington Avenue- Come to Washington Avenue, the mayor said next year we're going to have bike lanes, but the idiotic state is going to make it one lane in a direction. We're going to have mass chaos on Washington Avenue. So, and like I said earlier, with Cleveland Street, it's impossible to park any time of the day there. Because they didn't provide enough parking, I worked for another apartment house right down in the corner on Dow Street, eight units with one parking space. All those tenants, and I've been working here for forty-five years, they all park on Cleveland Street. So this is bad policies over the years, and now we keep compounding it with more of this high density development. And I don't know if you've been to Montclair, I'll save it for my son up in there. But this is, it's just not a good parking situation. In regards to the driveway on Cleveland Street, you're closing that up. And you said you're making another parking space. Unfortunately, I happen to frequent, because my two boys, Richie's Auto Body, four times. I'm well aware of that. That driveway was never used as a driveway, people always parked in front of that driveway on Cleveland Street. There was just another parking space there. And there's one other question I want. Are you aware of any merchant or business in the area that has a lease with Richie's Auto Body to park thirty cars on that lot after six P M.?
I do not.
You don't? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sheldon?
Michael Sheldon, forty-seven Floyd Street. At the beginning of Mr. Rawlings' testimony tonight, he had a slide with a table with the parking data. Could that be called up again? Because I did have a question about the number, one of the numbers appearing on that slide. It was one of the very first slides Mr. Rawlings, so.
I can pull it up, but it doesn't quite match what Joe, Joe's testimony was, so that's why. What should I do, Tom?
I think the better thing would be to listen to Mr. Steiger's testimony and go with those numbers.
All right, okay. All right, well, it's been repeatedly said tonight that you're providing six visitor parking spots. But, you know, I have chapter twenty-three here, the relevant section, dealing with parking requirements. And on page thirty-four, twenty-three dash six point one, subsection B, visitor parking, it says, any multifamily residential projects or buildings not within the P R D district containing twenty dwelling units or greater shall be required to provide visitor parking spaces in addition to the minimum per unit space requirements in the chapter. There shall be a minimum of one visitor space for every ten resident spaces. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, there are eighty-one residential units in this building. So if you have to have one visitor space for every ten residential units, doesn't that mean that there has to be eight visitor spaces, not the six that's been repeatedly said tonight?
No, I, I said eight point one. I said we, we required to have eight point one parking spaces for guests. Maybe on Mr. Rawlings' table, which was done previously, maybe even before the ordinance was passed, maybe six was on there, but, but I, I'll run through the numbers again.
Okay, I'm going to appreciate it.
We need one space for every unit, so we need eighty-one spaces for the units. We need eight point one, you know, as you pointed out, one for every ten for the guests. We need one point eight spaces for the retail and one point nine for the office. That comes up to ninety-two point eight. I rounded up to the nearest ten, Ms. Boochi Carter, she did to the, to the hundred. But my number's a little bit high, but I rounded up to, around number ninety-three spaces. We need ninety-three spaces required.
Well, what's the source of the confusion? Because on his slide, I believe it does say six visitor spaces. When it, the number, as you correctly said, it's actually eight point one. Because it was a discrepancy, it's very close here to, you know, the line, and it seemed like you were, it might be further than what was alleged. All right, thank you, that's it for this.
Any other witnesses? Oh, yes, or player, thanks.
Since we're talking about parking, I, I'll start with parking. I just want to remind everyone, there are no variances proposed for parking. And I think addressing the full picture of the application and looking at the benefits versus detriments, you can see that this applicant has done everything that they can to address any issues with parking, even though there are no variances. Agreeing to add the zip car, providing visitor parking, and not charging for the parking. And those, all those items add up to really doing everything that you possibly can to make sure that this isn't going to create any, have any negative impact on the surrounding community. What I'd like to do is just run through some of the items very quickly in the report. I think you guys addressed everything. Thank you very much for really speaking to details and questions in the report. A couple of things came up in the testimony that I just want to confirm. It's mostly architectural. You mentioned that.
I'm sorry, before you move off of parking.
Okay.
So looking at your report, it's ninety-three spaces required, proposed ninety-one. Difference, though, is I think the credit.
The credit for the E V spaces.
Right, so even though it's showing ninety-one proposed, ninety, I think that's the, that's the confusion here. Ninety-three spaces required, ninety-one proposed, when you factor in the credit that you mentioned, you're okay. Okay.
We gain another ten, ten spaces.
Right, okay.
And I, and I think what I'm going to speak to here, or any items that came up during the discussion, which would have to be addressed in just kind of articulating the plans and notating it on the plan, so a final set could make sure that there's no question, and that would identify the E V spaces and locations. I guess one question is, in some cases, the state ordinance and the local ordinance allows these spaces to be phased in. If you phase them in, you need to post a performance bond. It possibly would be, makes sense to not bother with that, but you have that option. I think you have to determine that when you finalize these plans. We would recommend that you just put them in upfront, and then you don't have to worry about anything else. And identify the location of the zip car as well. Even identify the location of the proposed loading space on the street, so that you could bring that to council, showing that you showed it, or, you know, brought it up with the planning board, and it's contained in the site plan. The other question was for lighting of the building came up, and in the report, the question was how that would be done. So since you are going to be lighting the building, add the details of that lighting and the locations on the revised plans. One question that wasn't addressed was the mechanical equipment and the screening of that mechanical equipment on the roof. That would need to be added.
And we will do that.
Okay. The other items are the green strategies. This is less than an acre in size, so there's only two out of the thirteen that would need to be incorporated. They're easy to meet, and you should just identify which ones and how you're going to do that. The, the other items is, the final item is affordable housing, no one talked about that. It is in the report, there's two options for that as well. Either incorporating the units or providing a payment in lieu. And we would address which one you're going to do in the final edition. Garage door, is that going to be opened with a fob? Okay. Okay, so that it'll always remain closed. The other, and the other thing is the materials were detailed and provided on the plans and spoken to by the architect for the revised plans, that the request is to incorporate the materials and their location on the elevations.
And we will do that.
And anything, any, any other utilities that may come up, such as the utility of the readers or a gas meters or anything like that, that would be interior to the building in the garage portion or in the mechanical room, not on the outside face of the building.
Agreed.
And I think that that is it. Yeah, I think, I think you guys did a great job in coming up with a gorgeous building and fitting it into the community. I don't have anything else.
Thank you.
Just one quick question, if the door's going to be accessed by far, how does retail customers access?
They could call, they'd call in, the retail, this type of retail, this is not going to be, it's probably going to be like a specialty retail, that there may be customers with appointments and things like that nature. That if they do call, they'll, they'll be, you know, intercom in, or they'll park on the street. So I don't believe that, we only have two spaces, we're not going to be able to accommodate ten customers at the same time. We're, we're thinking that someone, a tenant that will come in here is going to be a low-temperature type of tenant.
Still want access to the garage to park there?
If, sure, and if, and if it's available, it'll be made that. And if they do make an appointment, or they, they're told they're coming, they'll be told, okay, you can park in, in parking space number two or something, and they'll be let in. Could also be an employee as well, right? Yes, yes. That's still one less car off the street. Exactly, so that would be ultimate, if we don't, we don't. Could be the owner. Yeah, could be the owner or the employee using it as well, that doesn't take up all the street parking spaces, that could be accommodated by customers.
Put one out?
No, I think it was turned off. Here we go.
I just have one last question, which I should have brought up, security. I know in your other buildings, with your other building, police, everybody will have access to cameras, so forth and so on, and access for fire and stuff like that, correct?
Yes. We pride ourselves on having a very secure building, we have cameras throughout the entire building, we have fob entrances at the lobby, we have fob entrances at the parking, we also have a dedicated package delivery, where the package delivery, U P S, FedEx, Amazon, can't get into the building, they can only get into a secure area. And that's the type of building, you know, things will be taken in here also. No, thank you.
No other questions, then close this session. Is anyone would like to give their opinion summation, Mr. Brantion, Tony?
Yes, of course, I'd like to welcome Mr. Marinello.
Thank you.
To Belleville, seems to be a nice, soft-spoken guy. But we need you to speak up, we use the microphone, we can't hear you from the audience.
Thank you.
This overdevelopment of Belleville is really beginning, and we're going to suffer like Montclair now. We've just come back, my daughter tonight, go look at all the empty stores in Montclair. It's still not happening. Now, with this parking situation, unfortunately, a lot of you members are new. Mr. Benaro is old, maybe he remembers some of the things. What I brought up with the parking is, if you go to Sol de Domeno, and they'd be there, the poor people, some of my cousins on Greenwich Street, live in horror. They can't park, they can't get out of their houses. One of my customers there is handicapped, she just got a handicap space, that's fine for parking. But she got rushed to the hospital, she can't get out, because ballet parking, there's all parked, jammed up in front of her house, jammed up on Cleveland Street there. But you've got to look back at history. When they came before the planning board, that was the Greaves Bar. Just a little shot and beer in his garage in the backyard, three or four people hang out there at night. Then he comes in with this restaurant, right? No parking at all. But anyway, he got a variance to put five parking spaces in the front, in front of the garage. Well, he did that for about a year. On two occasions, I made complaints to Mr. Di Lorenzo's office, because he put a white tent, and those five parking spaces are eating spaces now. So the planning board never follows up, and nobody ever checks on all these variances. In addition, back then, thirty, forty years ago, I've been going to meetings for Fort that age, he testified under oath that he had a lease with Richie's Auto Body to park thirty cars there after six P M. So that's why I asked the question. Again, nobody checks. Well, turns out he never had a lease with it, he lied under oath. You have a parent situation.
We're getting, we're getting into property leak, that's all.
Whiskey Priest testified under oath that he, the gas agent across the street, has allowed him to twenty parking spaces after six o'clock. Well, guess what happens? As the devil comes in, and he's going to build, I don't know, forty units on there, where's his twenty parking spaces across the street? Look at Union Avenue, right next to Whiskey Priest, you have the daycare center. Have you noticed these poor mothers of double park to take these little infants and children out over there? And now you have another proposal coming before you, with another twenty-two or twenty-four units running across the street from the Whiskey Priest. Don't you guys now see what you're doing, the devil, with this overdevelopment? You know, so, so none of these things, so we don't have the parking that was required at this planning board meeting under oath for the Whiskey Priest. We don't have the parking that was testified under oath for Sol de Domeno, the dirty parking space that he claimed that would leave with Richie's Auto Body. The next day, I went to Richie, who's a friend of mine, you never, I never talked to the guy. And go look at Cleveland Street, go look at it, any night of the week, but especially weekends. And that overflows onto Washington Avenue, and it's absolutely horrendous. So some of you have to take this serious, and most of you very rarely even ask a question, just sit there, and I guess your votes are pre-planned what you're going to vote on. The other thing is runoff, all right? Now, if we get all these engineers and fancy architects and all over here, we're going to put drainage up there, and we're going to have retention basin, repeat tension basin and all that. Ultimately, it goes to one place. It goes into our sewer system, our Washington Avenue, and it goes down, and it goes into the Desake River. So every inch of all these developments, every inch of pervious place is being paved over. So you're going to catch the water. Instead of being absorbed into the ground, where I think we were supposed to have thirty percent pervious area, which stays on site and slowly permeates into the ground, we're collecting it, putting it into our existing sewer system, and bringing it down to the Desake River, and the poor people in the valley, some of my personal friends, many of my customers, suffer more and more. The flooding in the valley gets worse and worse. So you guys are planners, not just yes or no votes. You're supposed to plan, you're supposed to look at the overall picture of the town. You see how this project affects that project, and affects the other project, and the township as a whole. Which you're not doing it. Each individual one comes with his fancy architect and lawyers here, and this is all his testimony, but, oh, this is the greatest thing since chocolate liver and all that. But there's no planner that is actually thinking, what are we doing to the entire town?
Our licensed planners is pretty good, just sitting here, so we have one.
Our planner's sitting right next to you.
But kind of summarizes, I guess you're against the project?
I'm, four projects, if we provide.
We're talking about this one, are you, or are you not?
This one is too big.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I wear size nine, I cannot get my foot into a size five shoe. And this is much too big. And then, like I said earlier, with what's going to happen with the state, I've been in contact with the mayor knows, with the state and the judge, trying to fight this bicycle lane and more, can you imagine?
But we're not talking about that now, we want to kind of.
Well, now, this is important, of course, this is part of planning. This is part of planning, you got to understand what this.
We're talking about bicycle lane, we're talking about the projects. Just can we kind of narrow it down, are you, or are you not for this? We know you don't like the parking, we know you don't like the drainage, is there anything else in this?
Madam Chairlady, I have the right to express my opinion. And I'm saying I'm against the project because of the, and I have the right to give all the reasons why.
You are.
Which I am doing, and I'm asking you people to pay attention, because you're destroying the township of Belleville. So you've got to look at it, you've got to look at it, and, and again.
Hopefully, everybody is looking at it.
We don't, we used to love Hoboken. Or the Steakhouse, we don't go to them, because we can't park. The last time I went there, seven years ago, me and my, a couple of friends of ours, sixty minutes driving around trying to park, goodbye Hoboken. We don't go to Montclair. We don't go to Montclair no more. We just went a month ago because my kid gave us the gift to the restaurant, and we had to park six blocks away to go to the restaurant. This is what you're doing to Belvo. Belvo was a great town. We had beautiful shopping center. I have all... I was vice president at Chamber of Commerce twenty-six years. We had not one single empty store. We had all kinds of retail malls. We had sidewalk sales. We had parties. It was a great town. Some of you older members of the town maybe remember.
Remember you in the shoe store.
You what?
I remember you in the shoe store.
Yeah, we had five shoe stores in Belvo. I was demanding if you wanted that, right? A fabulous shopping center. And then we started all this over development, and we had no parking. So please, I'm asking you to scale this thing down a little bit, put some pervious area... And you should mandate... We've got to get back to the original. Mandate extra percentage of pervious area. Keep that water on-site. Don't dump it to the poor people in the valley.
Okay.
Please, let's start really planning for Belvo instead of just saying, "Yes."
Well, we hope to not. Anyone else? Mr. Sheldon?
And you could kind of condense it. I don't want to go away.
I try not to ramble on too long. I know it's getting late. It's already going on nine o'clock.
Thank you.
Do I need to be sworn in since I'm about to give a testimony? It's usually the protocol.
Since you're referring to testimony, you're about to be approved. Be interested, although you think that's...
I do.
Thank you. You just say so.
Michael Sheldon, forty-seventh Lloyd Street. I want to start off by saying I share Mr. Benaro's concern. As Ms. Pucci Carter revealed during her testimony, the driveway entrance is going to be locked. There'll be a fob. As Mr. Benaro rightly said, you know, how are visitors and customers of retail going to use? It's going to largely dissuade visitors and customers from parking inside the building. It'll likely wind up on the street, which will further compound that problem. Got to ask earlier. I was concerned about the aesthetics of this building. I'm somewhat relieved by the appearance of it, in particular the softening with the trees. But are those trees at curbside? Or are those trees on the property owner's lot? I just don't remember where are the trees...
They'll be curbside, right.
They're curbside. All right, so that means that when the state comes in next year to do this grandiose street state project, those trees are likely to come down or be lost, right? The state owns that median on the curbside.
I don't know if they take away the curves.
Well, I don't think the trees will even be there next year because I don't think the building will be that far off, right?
Well, what guarantee is there?
Yes, I could speak to that.
Yes, thank you.
As far as I know, unless it's changed, and Tom can confirm, the improvements by the state, this from curb to curb, they're not doing sidewalk improvements. They're doing street travel with improvements. So they will not be effective.
Okay, all right. So I'm hoping that there can be a binding commitment to put those trees in because those are really critical to soften the facade. And without those trees, the lower part of this starts to look industrial. So without the trees, I would say the only recourse is to contact our resident artist and pay her to do a huge cherry blossom mural on the bottom part of this building because otherwise that's going to become an eyesore. Trees are absolutely critical. So I hope you guys can make that a binding condition for the approval of this project. Last week, when you guys were hearing another case involving Mr. Dorsel, Mr. Melon, Ms. Cabanda had expressed some concern during that hearing that one of the recent projects in this building left a lot to... That one of these recent projects had been completed in Belvo, left a lot to be desired in regard to soundproofing. That they... I believe they said that you could hear conversations readily in the floor above or below. I'm hoping that it's not Mr. Pacillo's project that they're referring to. It's nothing to do with ethos.
No.
All right, all right. So ethos is good with you guys, right? No problems with soundproofing with ethos, right?
We just discussed that consideration.
All right. The gentle lady from Cleveland Street had asked earlier this evening about any tax abatements. But just to have it on record, two years ago, council approved a declaration of the entire township, the townwide area in need of rehabilitation. And part of that verbiage included a five-year tax abatement program for new construction, wherein the first year, there's zero taxes. Year number two, there's twenty percent.
You're aware of the conditions.
Right, well, you are, but she was... She had asked if there's any tax abatement. And you said, I think that's the point, it was not relevant. But they...
Exactly.
They would totally apply.
This project will qualify for that tax relief. They will not be paying any property taxes in the first year, only twenty percent in the second year.
They would have to apply.
Apply, but in all likelihood. In all likelihood, I'm sure they'll be granted.
Nothing to discuss with council.
Granted that, right. But there is a property tax relief program in place right now township-wide. And in likelihood, sound development will apply to that.
We can't... We're not forest seekers. We're not forest tellers. We don't know what may happen.
That plan, obviously, was put into place for a particular purpose, just like this one, right?
That's all right. Could you conclude whether you're for it or not?
Well, I'm... I still believe the scale of it is too... A bit too large for this area, for our township.